I'm calling to order the regular reading of the Gillum County Court. This is February 19th, and we're in Arlington today. The Southwestern Forum, we have all commissioners present, and we will have the flags lit. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, visible with liberty and justice. Welcome, everyone. First item on the agenda is giving additions or revisions to the agenda. 3.0, correspondence, public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise their hand to be recognized by the chair, give their name and address, and limit comments to three minutes. Is there any public comment in the room? Is there any public comment online? No? Okay. We have some pieces of correspondence. We have a letter from BLM, a request for input on 30 Mile Recreation Area and Travel Management Project. You can find that online. And then the next item we have is information regarding possible endowment. And this is Valerie Runquist, Oregon Community Foundation. Is she on? Okay.
Hi, everyone. Can everyone hear me? I'm trying to get my video up.
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, that's a good start. Okay. Oh, Anja, I believe you've stopped my video. What's going on?
No, I don't think I can control that.
Oh, no.
I actually don't have video option either today, Val, or the court. So, but you've got great audio connection.
All right, well, that's the most important part. And, okay, and I see I'm going to be able to share. All right. Well, with that, then, you can see my image from a couple of years ago. My name is Valerie Runquist. I am the, I am a senior program officer with the Oregon Community Foundation. And I oversee what we call our Endowment Partners Program. And so that's what I am here today to describe. I am picking up this conversation. I understand there has been a conver, this conversation has been ongoing for a while now. I'm not sure quite how long. I am, this is being handed over to me by my colleague Julie Gregory. So my biggest concern is that I am not repeating information that you have already heard. And I primarily want to answer your questions. So feel free to interrupt me at any time. There's my video. Hello, everybody. This is what I look like. Thank you very much. Okay, there we go. Nice to see everyone. Thank you very much for having me here today. And so I thought what I would focus on today is, well, I'm an administrator. So I oversee the endowment funds for 457 organizations around the state of Oregon. And so I tend to get into the weeds and nitty gritty. So I thought that today I would make sure that I, one, answered all of your questions, but just provided the details of how, well, technically, a nonprofit fund at the Oregon Community Foundation works. And before I launch a PowerPoint presentation I have, I want to pause to see if there are any specific questions you would like me to address today.
I would like to know what other Oregon counties have you held?
Okay. You know, I don't, off the top of my head, well, actually, I know we, I don't have a relationship with a county, but I do have relationships with other municipalities. What comes to mind is the city of Lake Oswego. Previously, let's see, the city of Fossil had funds here. And I think my primary reference would be the city of Lake Oswego. And I'd have to go through my list to see what other municipalities we have. But I do have to say that a relationship with Gillum County would be a first with a, for a county relationship, and that would be an honor. All right, let me.
Do you have to request to share your screen, Valerie?
Yes.
And then I approve it?
Okay. Let me get this launched. Back to Zoom. Navigating technology, send request. There. Are you seeing a whole bunch of blue?
Yeah.
All right. So again, I don't want to repeat information you already know, but I always like to start by setting, setting the context for what all of these relationships, these 457 relationships I have, what these endowment funds are all about. So set the context, describe context, describe what this Endowment Partners Program is. And one of the biggest interests in this, in these relationships is, is our investment program. So I'm prepared to talk about that. But I will let you gauge what level of interest you have in how we manage endowment and invest in endowment. So I'm guessing from the prior conversations that you're already a bit familiar with the Oregon Community Foundation, any community foundation, where this conglomeration of generous gifts from a community of generous donors that have established a variety of different types of funds at the community foundation. Now, I'm not going to take up our time and talk about each type of fund here. But what I want to hone in on, what I want to really drill in on is this fund called a designated fund. And so here I'm getting very mechanical. So with a donor-designated fund, the donor comes to OCF, establishes their charitable fund, and they already have an idea. They already know with, you know, in their vision of their philanthropy, they know what organizations they want to support. So at the time they establish the fund, they designate the annual grantees on the fund. And then you have the case of an agency-endowment fund. So this is a term you can Google. It's the term for these types of funds used within community foundations. And with an agency-endowment fund, it is the nonprofit charitable organization that is providing a donation to the community foundation, establishing their own charitable fund, and then designating themselves as the grantee. So that is the bare bones, dry, in-the-weeds definition of what these funds are. So at OCF, we call those our endowment partner funds, our endowment partner program. And I already described it. I work with 457 organizations. Many have multiple funds, so for line items, individual funds, they, there are about 155 funds. And at the end of December, at the end of 2024, they totaled around $340 million, representing endowment for our charitable communities around the state of Oregon. So what is key here in, and what makes this a particularly large decision for an organization, and in this case for your county government, is that in the legal sense, there has to be a transfer of ownership of the funds. So the Oregon Community Foundation is a public charity. We are not a registered investment management firm. So we will never walk and talk like a bank, like an investment management firm, an investment advisor. So we are a fellow charitable organization. And so because of that, of course, we cannot advise, invest other entities' money. So there has to be that legal transfer of ownership. So it's a big step. Why do organizations consider taking this step and transferring their endowment to the community foundation? And I already alluded to one of, one of the, it's not the only reason, but it's really about having access to this very complex investment program. OCF has been here for more than 50 years and is well-versed in managing and investing endowments, maintaining these funds into perpetuity and for future generations. And it allows these organizations to focus on their own missions, on their own day-to-day work. They don't have to spend their time continually, you know, monitoring investment performance, being concerned about administration and spending policies and all the technicalities around an endowment fund. And for organizations that are looking to build their endowment, they do have access to our plan-giving services. I don't know that that's necessarily a positive feature for Gillum County, but for other organizations. And they have access to our philanthropic advisors on how to handle complex gifts. And then I am here, one of my primary roles is to, as, as there is a change in leadership of organizations and staff, I, I am here to explain this scenario to them and explain how their fund works at the community foundation. I'm going to pause there for questions. Wasn't sure if I was hearing a question. Okay. So.
That was my phone. Sorry.
No, no worries, no worries. I just didn't want to cut anybody off. So as an organization, if they, if they decide to take this big step, of course, it would require approval of their board or whatever the governing body is. We have, I just basically gather some information. So I previously provided to Anja a form that we call our organization profile. Typically, with an organization that is, is new to OCF, you know, this is, this, this decision definitely has gravitas. And so we want to make sure that this organization is, is taking this step to establish a permanent charitable fund, a permanent endowment at OCF, that they are in the right place financially to do that. So as you, if, if you have already taken a look at that organization profile, it references their, a request for financials. And of course, I'm going, I, that would be waived in the case of Gillum County. But it does help us to gather contact information and other things like that. So completing that, that little form. And then OCF, I would pull in one of our philanthropic advisors. We would draft a fund agreement. And I thought possibly, if there's time, we could take a look at that fund agreement today. What, so we would draft a fund agreement and provide it to Gillum County Court, to the judge, for review. And once everything is copacetic, we sign the, the fund, mutually sign the fund agreement. It's executed. And then we just transfer, receive a transfer of a minimum of $25,000, and the fund is basically up and running. So it's a pretty simple process, all in all. And so that's the mechanics. I'll pause right there. If you want, I can do a high-level, brief description of how we manage endowment, or we can segue, and I can pull up a fund agreement and, and talk about other aspects of the arrangement. What is your preference?
See how you manage them. I guess that's kind of a question I have.
Yeah. Okay, great. So at this community foundation, I went through the slides quickly. We're this, as I said, a conglomeration of all these charitable funds. Now, not every single fund, I mean, there's like more than 3,000 of these funds created by all sorts of different, different donors. And of course, including nonprofit organizations. And so not all of them are endowed. Most of them are. So those that are meant to be maintained into perpetuity, those are pooled together for investment purposes. So we have two investment pools, which I'll describe in a minute. But the overarching goal of investing endowment, really, you know, an endowment in this regard, a true endowment, is meant to provide an, an annual income stream back to the organization. There are some organizations that, you know, sometimes this term "endowment" gets a little fuzzy, and they might consider their endowment actually a long-term reserve. So, so I really very carefully make that delineation for organizations so that they understand that the fund they have established at OCF is meant, meant to be, meant to provide that annual income stream and not meant to be tapped into on a lump sum basis. So maintaining that annual distribution, that annual revenue stream back to the organization, i.e. the way we phrase it, to support annual spending. So we want to earn enough with this investment program, with the goals of this investing, to provide for that annual spending, but also provide for spending next year and next year, and, and on and on into, you know, perpetuity. And the next 100 years from now, we want those distributions, that annual income stream to have the same impact as it has today. So staying ahead of inflation and maintaining the purchasing power of the fund. So of course, we want some genuine growth on top of that. But to maintain the integrity of the endowment as a whole, it's, it's about providing for spending and staying ahead of inflation. There is a social option. So I just threw this screen in, in here just to say that the, the goals are the same, except that with that investment pool, there are the additional ESG screenings as they are selecting investment managers in that investment pool. So you want to balance, the idea is, in the world of endowment, you want to balance these goals of, of meeting spending needs and staying ahead of inflation with spending on a modest level. So we have a very typical spending policy, and it is in accordance. And I'll just call out, the OCF does adhere to some legislation called the Unified Prudent Management of Institutional Funds Act. And if anybody wants information on that, I can provide it if you don't know about it already. But it requires that an organization with true endowment have a reasonable prudent spending policy. So ours is pretty typical. It starts with a modest payout rate. For us, it's between 4% and 5%. And then that is applied to an average of market values. Oh, and I forgot the first bullet point there. The, of course, that payout rate is approved by our Board of Directors. And they receive information each August in their board meeting from our investment committee. And they decide what the rate, they approve what the rate will be for the next calendar year. So in August of 2024, they approved a payout rate for the calendar year 2025 of 4.1%. So you see, that is very close to the bottom, the, the floor of, of that range. And generally speaking, it has to do with, and I don't know what you're hearing about markets right now. On, on the way into work today on NPR, I was hearing a piece, and I, I was surprised that this conversation has made it that far. But the, the idea that equity markets are very, very highly priced right now. And so that kind of, that, not kind of, it diminishes the outlook for performance going forward. So in a nutshell, it's that equities are so high, so expensive, nobody's sure if they'll keep going up or if there's an increased chance that there could be a downturn. So that's one reason for the modest payout rate. But another aspect to that is the desire to provide predictability in our, in our own grants and in distributions from these endowment funds back to organizations. So number one, we provide, that's why you see on the last bullet point, we apply that modest rate to an average of market values. So the averaging provides that smoothing effect. These funds are invested in the markets, and we know markets go up and down. So we want to smooth that out as much as possible with the average. But then with that modest payout rate, there's kind of an inverse relationship that philosophically, what we want to do is pull back on the rate when valuations are high, when the markets are potentially at a peak. And then if there's a downturn and market valuations start to come down, then you increase the payout rate. So that offset helps, helps provide some of that smoothing. So those are the overarching principles of managing endowment. I can go into more details with this slide. I will just, this is the governance structure of this investment program. Of course, the Board of Directors governs all, sets, ultimately sets policy and approves policy. Day-to-day oversight of these investments is, of course, delegated to our investment committee. Pretty typical structure. There are some larger community foundations and other entities, think of Harvard, where they have their, their own investment department, their own chief investment officer. We have elected not to take that model, so we hire that expertise. So our investment consultant currently is Cambridge Associates. They are a very well-known gold standard investment consultant in the institutional investing world. And then they oversee the investment managers that we have hired in the two pools there. So I already alluded to the social impact pool earlier with those ESG screenings. But the larger of the two pools is the main investment pool, creatively named because at one point in time, there were, there was only one pool. But at the end of 2024, the main investment pool sits at about $2.5 billion, and the social pool, much smaller, is at $206 million. So those are nice, big numbers. But what it really means is, you know, that large size avails the average organization to have access to a level of investment expertise, institutional investment expertise, that they would never be able to access on their own. Even if, you know, a large $20 million endowment would not have the same access that is afforded organizations that, that take this step. I think, I, oh, and any organization establishing a fund, any donor actually establishing an endowed fund, it's not 100% either-or with the pools. You can have an allocation of your fund to either or, or both pools. Shall I keep going or, in describing the investments? Or shall we pause for questions?
Valerie, I kind of have a couple of questions. So whether you had a investment of a million or 20 million, I'm, I'm just kind of looking here at page two of this thing, and it's talking about, you know, we know the market's been on a trend in the last few years. And I guess the concern I have is like what happened in 2008 and in the 80s. But it says here, you know, I guess if we have this large amount of money in this pool, and if I'm reading this right, it's like, okay, so your return is a little higher than normal. But they're still recommending they're only going to pay like 5%. And then, and then a couple of sentences later, if it's lower or whatever, they're saying that no less than 4%. Does that say, whatever amount of money we give you, you're going to pay us 4%? The minimum?
Yeah, of, of the average of market values.
Of the average.
Yeah, yeah. So the idea with that, that prudent, as they call it, as UMFIA calls it, that modest payout rate, I, I think of it as kind of reverse dollar-cost averaging. You know, as you're making contributions to your 401K or your IRA, and you add some every year, it, you know, regardless of what the markets are doing, going up and down, in the long term, you create that averaging effect. So yes, it's true. Sometimes we are paying out higher than what the markets are performing, and sometimes we're paying out less than what the markets are performing. And this diagram is, is an example of our vision of that long-term endowment. And it started, it started as an actual endowment partner fund. This organization created their fund with an even $100,000. This fund has worked like clockwork, taking their distributions twice a year over this 32-year period to a total of $258,000. And, you know, this, it is true that, you know, you see that blue line there. The, the blue line represents the actual market values of the fund that, you know, we're averaging when we're doing the, the spending calculation. And then the orange line is the goal that I mentioned earlier, that $100,000 indexed for inflation. This is a rosy picture showing that, yes, indeed, we are achieving that goal. That blue line, the market value, is ahead of inflation, and the fund is being well-sustained. But with that blue line, you also see the peaks and valleys. I think in this diagram, that first peak is the dot-com bubble with its valley, valley, subsequent valley with the dot-com, the, the tech bubble burst. And then the, the second peak is the real estate, and then the Great, Great Recession. And then gradual up and down a bit, but the gradual climb up to 2021. Yeah, the peak was 2021, and then 2022 was, was a valley year. And so depending on when the fund is entering the markets, it might not be as rosy of a picture. You know, you, you can't time the markets, you can't know. But you just keep your, your vision on the horizon that over time, the fund will catch up with, with market values. And for example, in 2008, I had some really difficult conversations with organizations that had established their endowment fund at OCF in December of 2007. You know, that, that's very harsh. So it's impossible to know where those peaks and valleys are going to be. But the long term is that, on average, the payout rate will be prudent and sustain the fund in, in the long. I keep saying "long term," but yeah, that's endowment. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around, like you've got stated there, that annualized, since inception, investment return was 8.6%. And you just take everything, you divide it. I mean, so the 32 years, that's about eight grand a year. But a concern is inflation rate of mine, because like I say, it's been more than 2.5% over the last few years.
Recently, yeah, recently, without a doubt. You can see, I mean, on that orange line, you see that, that little northward trend there, you know, with the orange line, absolutely. Yeah. But it's, it's just about long-term sustainability. And I will say, you know, OCF's payout rate is, is not out of line with, with the big endowments. You know, you think about Yale and Harvard, and, and, and that's something that Cambridge provides to us. They have access to a lot of, and they work with a lot of large university and hospital endowments. And so we get some comparison. And nobody is paying out 5% right now. And I, I think that's just considering the potential of the markets and these high, high valuations and high run-up of, of public markets.
So has there been a lot of time where you've had to pay below the minimum, like this 4%? Or?
Well, I mean, just looking at this chart, anytime you see a valley there, anytime you see a downturn, yeah. We are absolutely paying above that year's performance. But that's just one year. I mean, again, that's why we average for providing that calculation. Okay. Any other questions or a direction you would like me to go? Oh, I see another slide that I know you'll be interested in. Of course, we charge fees. We, we have overhead. And so there is an administrative fee that is taken out of the bottom line of the fund. So these fees are assessed against the fund on a monthly basis, based on our database is able to do an average daily market value. So it, it is weighted for cash flows. Like I said, I get in the weeds. But these fees for these endowment partner funds are around half of what they are for any other type of fund at the foundation. So if a donor comes and establishes a donor-advised fund, those start at 1%. So here, we, the first tier is at half a percent. And then any market values in that fund that exceed $1 million, they're, of course, the rate starts to come down, as you can see. So they're assessed a rate of 0.2. And if a fund is above $5 million, those balances are assessed 0.1%. So the effective administrative fee, the larger the fund is, that effective rate comes down. What else?
One question? I'm sorry.
No.
So on that page that you're showing there, and then the one we have here, I'm looking at this, but the last sentence says, rates shown do not include investment management costs.
That is true.
So do we have an average, or I mean, how?
Yeah, yeah. So with, let me, so taking a look, and this is an exhibit of the main investment pool. So there are literally hundreds of investment managers. And they span, their fees are going to span from, you know, a, a mutual fund. I mean, you think about your mutual funds that you, you are likely invested in. I mean, you think about your mutual funds that you you are likely invested in, and they have an expense ratio. So that's not a reported line item that I can provide. So some of these expense ratios can be as small as like point two-five percent, twenty-five basis points. And then others, on the other end of the spectrum, we have the more expensive managers, these these alternative managers, the public, excuse me, the private investment managers. And there are hedge fund managers in in this main pool allocation. On this chart, anything you see phrased as marketable alternative, and there's a category, capital appreciation marketable alternative and diversifying marketable alternative down below in the blue, those are the hedge fund managers. Okay, point being, we are invested in these alternative assets and those managers have fee structures where they get their their base rate. And a typical rate is going to be between, what I've seen is like one point two-five percent to two percent. If they meet a particular performance hurdle, then they get to take an additional fee off of those profits. So they do tend to be on the more expensive side. But because of the moving target nature of whether or not they're getting their extra, their, what's the, I'm sorry, I'm losing my terminology. Whether or not they get their special carrying fee or not, it it's hard to say. So, of course, we look very, very closely at the costs of the investment program. And Cambridge, giving given their their reputation in this investment community, are very successful in negotiating fees down for us. So periodically, they do provide, you know, mentioning that moving target of fees, they they take a snapshot about once a year and provide that information to our investment committee and board. And so in that last snapshot, it was point eight-eight percent of, and that was the fees assessed at that point in time. So given the range from, you know, relatively small fees to the more sophisticated fees with the alternative managers, on average, it's about, it's it's well less than one percent. And that does include the Cambridge fees as well. And this is where I call out that you don't see the cost of the investment program. You don't, you do not see that on a statement. But you know that all of these expenses are, all of our performance numbers and all of the returns added to the fund are net of the investment costs. Whereas the administrative fee, that half a percent, point two percent, point one percent, those are are an expense item out of the bottom line of the fund. Any other questions or any particular, would you like to take a look at a fund agreement? I can close this PowerPoint down and pull up a a fund agreement document. Or maybe that's for you to review. I provided, I provided that to Anja. You can easily review what that fund agreement looks like on your own. You don't really need me to show it to you.
Look, so Valerie, I have one other question. So say you have somebody do this, let's just say they put in a million a year for ten or twenty years. And let's say they said, okay, I want to pull this out. What, I mean, do they have the option? I mean, what, have you had that happen or anything like that?
Yeah, in in the early years of O C F, these fund agreements did have a clause that allowed the organization. And, you know, because of that legal ownership and oversight by the by the Treasury and I R S, they're, they could make the, the fund agreement had a provision to allow them to make that request, to either take a distribution above our spending policy amount or or even to hold the fund. What we found in, and this is a bit of a story, I apologize for that. But what we found in, you know, we were looking at those peaks and valleys in in that one chart, particularly in my tenure, I I experienced the Great Recession in two thousand and eight and somewhat two thousand and nine. And so organizations that had that provision in their fund agreement, simultaneously, they had transferred to us their board-designated endowment, which they considered their operating reserve. So this was a perfect storm of failure on O C F's part. We were allowing these organizations to enter into this this paradigm, this this management style, their reserves unwittingly. And so they were tapping those reserves at the worst possible time. In two thousand and eight, we were negative, we were better than than many organizations that were, you know, many, much performance was like negative fifty percent. We were only negative point two-eight percent, I mean, twenty-eight percent. But of course, we allowed them to exercise that clause and they realized that loss. So we we shifted gears and we removed that clause from our standard fund agreement. And then I started seriously beating the drum about having reserves outside of O C F and that that this this model is about true permanent endowment. So that being said, our default is to not have that clause. But we do have a gift acceptance policy and, excuse me, we do have a gift acceptance committee. Yes, we have a policy too, but we have a committee with whom we could have a conversation. So I'm I'm not shutting the door on that possibility. But it would be a conversation, is all I'm saying. Does that help?
Yeah.
So our model is true permanent endowment and yeah, it's it's meant to be a permanent fund at O C F, but we can have a conversation. Anything else?
Because you think that somebody down the road would want to pull that out? Is that why you're asking?
Well, and that's, that's why I'm, one of the reasons I'm really willing to say that that we could have a conversation with our senior management about having a fund agreement with Gillum County that would allow them that flexibility that I just described, the the clause that would, the provision to request amounts above our spending policy or to to pull the fund. We can have that conversation because I think it's far less likely that you, as an entity, are going to, are going to request to pull the fund in a crisis when we're down in the markets and and realize a loss. That that's my biggest concern is, you know, we don't want organizations to make a misstep on and and be detrimental to their own finances. So it's just.
Now, that was kind of my question is, you know, is I, you know, what if we're doing this and then for some reason, somehow, we got in a bad physical funds and needed funds, you know, I I guess I just want to.
Yeah, I, we can, again, we can have that conversation to build in that flexibility in the fund agreement. But I will personally warn you that that could be dangerous financially, I mean, investment-wise. You could be tapping the fund at the exact wrong time. And so I just want to emphasize that that this model is truly about endowment and any, any, what's the word I want, liquidity should not be at O C F. If that makes sense, in my opinion. I'm not an investment consultant, but I can tell you that our our model is not built in to provide liquid access to the fund. At the same time, we can entertain that conversation about having that provision in a fund agreement that would be executed between our our two entities.
Well, like I say, the other thing is there's some interesting times going on right now.
Yeah, there are.
So, you know, a lot of people are wondering about some of the state and federal funds. And I guess if we, I guess that's my concern is if we make a commitment, I just, I don't know, options are always good, I guess, but I think I think myself.
I mean, I can, I can completely understand wanting wanting to have that flexibility. So, I mean, it makes sense to me. But I would, I would need to, again, just to emphasize, I need to have that car. I it's above my pay grade, I'll put it that simply, it's above my pay grade to make that decision. But the conversation can be had.
I can't anything else right now. Thank you.
So do you you feel like you have a decent picture of what this arrangement would be?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I I actually have a couple of questions. The whole idea behind this endowment fund was to support our early learning childcare within our Gillum County.
That's very exciting.
And we had, we passed a post-fee ordinance that actually directs of twenty percent of those post-fees to to an early learning stability fund, which is going to be around a million. My question is, is how, how many years will we have to build that to get it to the point where it could sustain the early learning at, say, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year? Somewhere in that ballpark?
Did you say seven hundred and fifty dollars a year or seven hundred?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, okay, okay, seven hundred and fifty K. You know, I can't answer that off the top of my head, I'm going to have to pull up Excel. And I actually do have this this nice little spreadsheet that a colleague built several years ago that that allows you to do some projections. So, you know, you can populate some assumptions, like what you think the investments might provide, that crystal ball, what the payout rate, you know, what you want to get to, how many, how much in contribution. So anyway, long and short, I'll send that to Anja and.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Let me, let me play around with that calculation, calculation. So ultimately, you would like it to provide annually seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty K.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll play with that. Well, I appreciate you bringing me in to have this conversation, everyone. It's it's really nice to meet you all and you know where I'm at. Anja has my contact information as questions come up. And if you would like to continue the conversation, I would, I will say that I and O C F would be really honored to work with you and, you know, love to be able to support your efforts with this early childhood learning support. So let me know what what other questions come up and I am available to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
All right. Thanks again. Talk to you later.
I don't think that you can take money that was, I mean, unless we change the enhancement fee ordinance thing, I don't think you can claw that back and spend it on something else. It's not like we could save the city of Condon or Arlington, that we need that money, so we're going to claw it back from you and use it for something else. You have to change the ordinance fee, that whole agreement. You can't, you can't take it back and use it for something else if we get in dire straits. Another thing I'll point out again, and I'll say this again, we have eleven million dollars in the enhancement fee thing that has been unappropriated. So even if we did have a shortfall with our general fund, we could start using some of that. Because somewhere along the line, it didn't get spent.
Yeah, well, I guess my thing was is with, if we did this, I mean, we did it five, ten, fifteen years or whatever, it's, it's, it's that. So we commit this money, it's to that fund, it's it's there. And if something dire were to happen, then I guess that's a concern of mine. I mean, I'm not saying that, well, I like to think the what ifs, and I think we need to.
But I'm still saying that I don't believe you can do that. I don't think you could take money that was, unless we changed the enhancement fee. You can't take something that is in a line item and then go, now we need it for emergency, which is the whole reason why I would like to see it go in there. So some court down the road doesn't say, I don't think childcare is important, so we're going to just take this money back and use it on this.
Was the Pennington Fund re-directed?
I I wasn't here, but do you?
No, but it's gone. I mean, it just got used and it's gone.
Okay.
I think a lot of it went to the building out here. And the batch went.
Oh, okay, I thought it might have been gone before that, but of course.
All right. So what goes hand in hand with this subject is the economic enhancement ordinance. So we have it in your packets. Are you, are you able to pull it up page by page?
Yeah.
Okay. In making a decision, I think we need to look at all benefits and risks, all pros and cons, and whether or not we remove the dollars from Gillum County's hands or retain them within Gillum County's hands. So looking at all of it. So we're going to look at the the ordinance, which was amended in in two thousand twenty-three. And it's been amended, this is a thirty-two-year-old document, it's been amended many times due to changes of needs and changes can just the evolution of our county.
So if that endowment fund stays within the county, can people donate to that endowment fund and have it be taxed? I would.
You mean like a private donor, like a private donor?
They can, they could donate to the child care as they currently exist, though, correct? But they.
I wouldn't think they would be able to donate to the county, could they?
What, but what I'm saying, say, say Marta had a big old house and she decided that she was, when she died, she was going to donate it to the early learning childcare. Could, I mean, how how are we going to do that within the county?
They could donate to the child cares.
They donate to the final one, three, which is the, which is the childcare at either end. They designate that or to the, to the education foundations, which are two. So they designate, that's where they want to go, they couldn't do it to the county. Because they wouldn't be able to.
You can't, you can't write it off of it, it's a check to the county.
Right, but you could certainly.
That's what I'm saying is we, you couldn't grow that endowment fund other than this ordinance.
So Article One Administration, this would take legal review. But when I read, "The Gillum County Treasurer shall hold all economic enhancement monies until the month of August of the succeeding year and shall invest such monies under guidelines provided by Oregon law." Do any of you, do you feel that that should be reviewed to to determine if if we can even use these monies in this way? Because it says the treasurer will hold the monies.
Well, but he's just holding them until he disperses them in August.
And shall invest such money. So I I think it would require a legal opinion. Unless we already have one, you know, if we do.
I I don't know what, so are you saying, because we're the city of Arlington, city of Condon, city of Lone Rock?
Yeah, we invest those until they're submitted to those organizations, right? Okay. So, and then that was one question I had, is there anything else you read on here? There's a lot of this ordinance that has to do with the homestead rebate program because that, at the time that it was created, was the biggest part of this. So then you go, it talks a lot about the procedure on the rebate, that's on page two. We could go to page two on that. Not a whole lot to discuss there because it has to do with the rebate. Page three has to do with again with the rebate, the homestead rebate. And then basically, it's talking all about the homestead rebate. So the only part of this ordinance that even gets into any detail is the distribution. And so that's on page, sorry, Anja, what, two, page one, two, three, four, so that's Article three is a distribution. And so what what this did and Commissioner Watkins, help help me if I'm misquoting anything. But the early learning sustainability line item was created with the latest version. And I believe a lot of that, if not all of that twenty percent, had gone to Gillum County's general fund. So now we don't have that going to the general fund.
Well, I think at the time that we have. Well, I think at the time that we had that meeting, we we asked about it, what it was gonna be like, and um, it was basically about between five and six hundred thousand a year was getting into the general fund, which I'm guessing that's probably why.
Okay, but it says a million. Uh, yeah, the budget shows a million dollar transfer, because this is the last year it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
So, so I just want to bring your attention to the homestead rebate line item. So if you go down, one, two, three, four, five, seven lines, there's a homestead rebate distribution line item. That's the money that any homeowner in Gillon County gets. Currently, it's a check for five hundred and ninety dollars, and I plan to propose to the budget committee that we increase that to fifteen hundred dollars and utilize some of those um, dollars that are sitting. Because that incentivizes homeownership, it incentivizes people moving here, it's a tool that has worked for thirty-two years, and I think it's time to increase that. Um, which is separate from the the original.
Well, then, if you're gonna do that, I think you need to go look at the abuse that happens with it sometimes, because there's some of those people that actually aren't living in those houses year-round and are getting that benefit of that.
Okay, so there's an appeal process, there's a pretty good procedure here that the assessor's office manages this. One thing that we could do is annual applications, um, which would improve the process, I believe, so that um, it's not just a standing application, that would take more effort, yes, it would take more work. Um, the other issue with that is that we would have to issue ten ninety-nines, and people would have to um, you know, report that on their taxes, and they're not technically getting the full amount, but fifteen hundred dollars is just a starting place in my mind that I was thinking. We haven't kept up with inflation with its funds. Um, one of our budget committee members brought it up the last meeting. So then you go down to the second to the last line, homestead rebate endowment fund. Those funds are managed here. So there's an expense line item, and there's an endowment line item. So in addition to talking about the endowment being managed by someone else, I think we have to weigh the pros and cons of what Gillon County earns an interest to determine if we are benefiting by moving this money away from Gillon County. So it's just a, I think we need to weigh this, and it is a big decision. So any other thoughts? I I just um, wanted to point that out. Um, oh, let's continue on on the on the distribution fund, the next, oh, let's just go over everything that's on here. City of Arlington, city of Condon, each city gets six percent, city of Lone Rock gets point five percent. The early learning sustainability lineup, Gillon County General Road Fund, fifteen point five percent. Workforce housing development line item, homestead rebate distribution, economic development line item. The north and south and special projects money comes out of this ordinance, and it's two percent for each. Revolving transition lining item, the homestead rebate endowment fund and a business development line item. Um, so we're so fortunate to have this. It it amounts to, uh, well, it's two dollars and sixty-one cents for every ton of garbage that's tipped. And we get a monthly report from Waste Management, and it amounts, right now, the twenty-four, I believe, was five million dollars, correct?
Almost five and a half.
Five and a half million dollars. So that's how the money flows. It comes in from the host fee agreement, and then it's governed by this this document. The other thing I want to point out in the host fee agreement, um, it it states that funds shall be used only for functions and activities that will enhance the county's economic development opportunities. The development fund is also recognized by Waste Management to be a benefit to Waste Management by improving the opportunities in the county for Waste Management and its employees. So basically, it's saying it shall improve the opportunities in the county for the county for Waste Management and for its employees, and in mitigating any potential negative economic impacts. So I think that's an important piece of this that we need to remember that we, because Waste Management is providing the funds, they're asking that it also benefit them and their employees as well as the county as a whole. So, and we've signed to that. Okay, next page is definitions. And this is what confuses me, is that we have under the distribution of funds, early learning sustainability line item, but then we have in the definitions on the fourth the fourth line, early learning sustainability to support a permanent endowment, which helps ensure affordable access to early learning services at regulated, high-quality early learning providers for Gillon County children age zero to five. So it's talking about endowment, but the distribution shows a line item. So I just think it needs some cleanup. Um, but I also think we have a workforce that needs childcare from zero to twelve. We need childcare and early learning for our workforce.
I guess I see that's, you know, important. Like I say, they've stated with Waste Management, childcare and stuff, and I I was just curious why, when this change was made, why didn't they just put like childcare or slash? I don't, you know, why they didn't include childcare or?
I I think it was just understood that that's what it was, early learning. Childcare.
Okay.
So in Arlington, we have the scenario that the early learning is in the school, it's the preschools in the schools, so they only provide childcare at their center. So would they, under the way this was written, would they have access to those funds? So those are my questions. And this was just a discussion for us to absorb and take action in a later day, if we choose to. Any thoughts?
Well, I guess the other thing.
Well, the thing is, we can push the can down the road, but we're we're, August is gonna be here before we know.
Mm-hmm. And it's still in the sustainability line item, earning interest for Gillon County.
And then it'll need to be distributed, and where is that gonna go?
Um, could we fund childcare through the sustainability line item, and the balance of the money could go into an endowment managed by Gillon County? Just a thought.
Well, I guess my thinking too on some of this is um, budgeting is coming up, and I mean, last meeting, we were just brought to our attention, road.
Okay.
Establishment road, which, I mean, I don't, you know, I think you could look at it, but this could be part of it too, they're already using it for it, but um, I think it would be a good idea to have some of the budget committee people.
Way in on this.
Way in on it. Um, I know that, I mean, I'm new, there's, you know, I I don't I don't know how many years Wallis been involved, but uh.
That might be a good idea.
I'm not sure he's been since she is.
Our funding is free tiered, property taxes, Waste Management Host Fee, Strategic Investment Program agreements. The Strategic Investment Program agreements are gonna roll into taxes eventually, but this is a big part of Gillon County governance, this document. So I think that, and and the finance, so having them weigh in on it, especially also the the potential increase in the homestead rebate, I think they should be involved. Is there uh, any thoughts on that, Commissioner Watkins? No.
Just more to think about, I guess.
I think that's a good idea. Um, as long as we have consensus, we can have the budget committee weigh in on it.
Um, like the the amount that's spent in the cities, that's been pretty much, that's been for quite a few years?
Well, there's a kind of a history that's kept, and I don't know, you have to read it to see how long. Um. How long the two percent? I think it had, I don't know how much, how long it's been, six percent, when I worked for the city of Condon in nineteen eighty-seven, we got some money. However, this ordinance is later than that.
Yeah.
So it's been, been a long time. I just don't know if the percentages have changed.
Well, yeah, everything's one up too.
Okay. Three point four, discuss future use of Shutter Station Industrial Park Brain Lab. Okay, so we've done quite a bit of work on this. Um, there was a a movement last bring to potentially um, rent the the building to Arden Mills. Um, we are under a grant through Economic Development Administration, a federal grant, which limits the use of the building. However, we have um, gone through the legal steps, and we have approved, a legally approved document, which is a release of covenant, which the covenant on that building um, goes until um, which is the the constraints on the grant until June. So it coming up. Oh, and that covenant has been sent to EDA for approval, and then will be released from the responsibility of having constraints. It was a twenty-year period of time, and we all know that the building was remained empty. There's been ideas for use of the building. Now we're going to be able to do whatever we want with the building. I contacted Arden Mills because they had been contacted previously and were interested in renting the building, and I thought I should contact them in good faith to see if they are interested. Um, they are not interested. They were mostly interested in the equipment that was in the building, which they have found other um, another way around what they were looking for in that equipment. So they're not interested in renting it or purchasing the equipment. So how would you all like to go about deciding what we want to do with this building? Just open it up for discussion? Um, I I just put it on the agenda as a discussion item and not an item for decision, so so we can just start talking about it.
Um. So Arden Mills, they are not interested at all?
They're not interested in that building.
I mean, I would think if we could, I don't know, rent it or lease it, put it out there, I I don't know. Um.
Do we want to advertise it for, do you have any thoughts? I'm gonna ask um, our port director.
Gotta reach out to Waste Management or Winter Solar, for them as well, their location-wise might be valuable to them.
Mm-hmm.
I hate to see it sit empty.
There was an idea about a childcare that was discussed at our town hall. I don't know if it's a good idea. The disadvantages would be, it's right on the highway, it's a long ways from town. I, you know, it would have to be brought up to standard. Um.
Yeah, I could see the advantages to the workers right there, but yeah, it's just out of town. I I, yeah.
Okay, and then the other thing that was mentioned at the meeting, at the town hall meeting, was that we rent space currently. Does it make sense to not rent space and utilize that in the space that we otherwise would would rent from others? But we have current lease agreements that are currently in place. Um, this is right in town. I think, again, you're further off off the path of the people you're serving when you're that far away. Um.
Have have you guys, um, like I know the sheriff's office there moved out now, have you had interest in like tenants coming in or?
We haven't, but we haven't marketed it actively, since they stopped in the December.
Because you just have the one opening, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So do we think that just advertising it for rent to businesses would be the right, the right way to go?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to it?
There's a, there's a tool that.
Advertising?
We need to utilize more as Oregon Prospector.
Oh, okay.
You might think a little larger than just like those local companies that I mentioned. You could get a more regional approach that could invite some interest.
Okay, we will contact you about that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Three point five, discuss summer youth program and venture coordinator. What this item is on the agendas, because I met with Public Health, Daily Wilson, with Lisa Helms, and with Katie Hams, who is um, with Condon School, and with our um, juvenile director, Amy Nation. And what was discussed is trying to get a summer program going. We have no summer care for children over over five years old. So we we have had um, history, and this is Condon, because the Arlington Center provides care for children up to age twelve. So I just wanted to explain the differences of why we were um, talking about this in Condon. A few years ago, a very successful summers program was put together um, with the help of Needed Counseling Solutions. So there's some movement to get something going and using prevention dollars to do it, which um, they, about half of the expense of a position could be paid with those prevention dollars. So I just wanted to talk to you about about that and ask you your thoughts.
Do we know a dollar amount will be?
Well, this is how much, forty-five to fifty thousand?
Okay, all right, okay.
Sherman County has a part-time prevention person, person that does some of this work, and um, Amy Nation reached out, got a job description, tried to figure out exactly, we we were wrestling with is the, could this position be a part-time position or a full-time position, but there's only funding as a part-time position? So we're just in the beginning stages of talking about this. But two things that we need to do for childcare in this county is summer and after-school care. And so I'm kind of trying to focus my energies there, that's what I can solve, um, or try to solve. So, but summer's imminent, it's coming.
Um, so I have a question. So um, I mean, I keep hearing that Condon only does zero to five. Is there, have they talked about it in their model to expand that to zero to twelve? Do you, I mean, and maybe some of that money that is going, that potentially is targeted at doing a summer program could then be diverted to the early learning center in Condon to help fund, if they go to the twelve, and they could get, you know, that money would be available to them potentially to do a summer program for zero to twelve? I mean, why did they stop at five?
I don't know if any of them are online, but I believe that when the the new addition is built, then they'll have that capability.
Oh.
For older kids. But right now, the Condon School District is doing an after-school from till three-thirty till the buses run. They have, the the littler kids have, do activities and work on their homework and different things in the school, right now.
Until the bus runs.
Yeah, yeah. But I I can't, personally, I can't see an eleven or twelve-year-old in a daycare center. So unless, I mean, well, I mean, eleven and twelve-year-olds I have in my family are at home.
Right, and I think most of them are probably able to be at home, you know, be latchkey kids and, and that, but I mean, I just keep hearing that zero to five, and that seems very, that seems like that really pigeonholes them into a certain, you know.
Well, and right now, I'm in the Condon childcare, there is only an infant and toddler room, and then there's the room for the older kids.
Yeah.
So there isn't a room for them to put older kids until they get their, the other part.
Then they aren't here to talk about it, but I I do worry about where they're gonna get the rest of the money. Um, so for their for their addition, because it estimates three million dollars, and they they received one point seven from Gillon County. So they they do have a grant that they're applying for again, and hopefully um, they can get that money. I just, I don't know what their plan B will be. I did let a board member know that the Seventh Day Adventist Church in Condon is for, going to be coming up for sale. It's a block away, one story, has a new roof, doesn't necessarily look like a church. Recent siding, would take a lot of remodeling. Um, not a lot, it would take remodeling. It has a kitchen, has a back room. Um, it has a yard, has parking. Um, and I just hope there's some other options being looked at to solve this childcare issue. Um, so is there any other thoughts on the the summer youth program?
So there's.
We're going to go ahead and pursue it with the dollars we have, but if we end up having problems in getting something put together, there are some other prevention dollars that Gillum County has earmarked that I might propose something. We'll see how, we'll see how it progresses.
Well, I think the problem last year was the, just the staff to do it. Because I think they, the person that did it the year before, which was really successful, they thought was coming back last year and then they didn't end up coming back.
Yeah, and that's, that's what happened last year.
Okay, and I think the Conde, the Gillum County Library has acted in some ways as that place for those older kids to go.
Yes.
Because I, and they're open until, I don't know, 5:00 or 5:30, I'm not sure which. And I think they're open five days a week until that time.
Actually, they're, I think they're open on Saturday. For a while on Saturday.
Right, as well, and, and they're able to do that where Arlington doesn't have that same capability because we don't have the budget to be able to have somebody be there. And that's part of the, the board from the Arlington Libraries, what we would like to do is be able to staff our library so that those kids would have a place to go until 5:00 or 5:30.
Yeah.
And where, and we don't have that, I mean, we have proposal four. And so, I mean, I think that the library in Condon is acting in that capacity, so.
I think that there's a main, how many kids are there?
The kids are there all the time. Every time I've gone in there at 4:30 or something, there's kids, all sorts of kids in there all the
That's great, and the prevention coordinator can coordinate.
Right.
Can coordinate, okay, we're going to library. They're getting them there, they're, they're figuring out the gaps and where there's activities and there's not activities, because Condon Arts Council has said they would step up. And maybe, but there needs to be somebody coordinate all these public pieces of time so that.
And the library is a safe place. It's got, you know, bathroom facility and, I mean, it's a safe place for the kids to go.
It is.
So, you know, Condon is fortunate to have that.
So is that Saturday, every Saturday or just summer?
Um, no, I think they're open Saturday.
A few, I'm not, I don't, I think it's like four hours.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah.
All day or?
It's not all day on Saturday, but I do think it's helpful where, and down here, we don't, we don't have that luxury to be able to do that.
But you did have the preschool come down.
Well, they have the kids come down all the time, but, but our goal is to be able to house those kids after school, you know, so those kids have a place to go, because like Leah said,
Yeah.
those older kids don't necessarily want to go to the daycare.
Yes.
I mean, their parents might want them to, but they could go to another facility that is safe. Yeah, or an activity that's safe.
Right. Okay. Consent agenda. Do we have minutes? You said, okay, just executive session. Okay, just the executive session minutes are all that we need to approve. Their motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the executive session minutes, February 5th, as presented.
And I never saw them, so they're, they're in your.
They're all, they're in here, okay. I'll let you take a look. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the executive session minutes from the February 5th, 2025 meeting. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Unfinished business. We have, we had a big problem. We had three people put in for two positions for the cultural coalition. So we have a report on that from our assistant Anya. And you can read the briefing on that. We did let the person know, the third person who put their name in, all the other open volunteer positions we have and encouraged her to, to maybe, she's interested, put in for those. So there is a suggested motion. Just, you know, I've checked their bylaws and it's six people, that's the cutoff.
Six is the cutoff, okay.
Oh, I forgot the background on that. I should have.
She was the last one.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I move to appoint Jody Gentry and Rhonda Filau, Filo, sorry if I butchered that name, to the Gillum County Cultural Trust Coalition effective February 19th, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jody Gentry and Rhonda Filau to the Gillum County Cultural Trust Coalition. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we have a recommended financial reconciliation policy. This financial reconciliation policy has been reviewed by legal counsel and approved. There is a policy within your packet and there's also a briefing and a suggested motion. Is there any discussion on this before we start?
So my question, so he's, he's gonna prepare the reconciliation report and then it's gonna come to the just go to the clerk?
Yeah.
Not the finance person?
Right. Separation duties.
And Brooke, and Brooke is on which account? She's on, she's only on this, two checking.
Yeah, I, I couldn't tell you that right now without asking and she's out of the country right now.
Okay.
Can we able to, and then so I can talk to Brooke further about, okay. She can approve this briefing and she's approved this. I mean, we can wait if you would like, but she was involved in this. And because they both wrote the briefing. Would you like to wait?
When, when's she gonna be back?
She'll be back on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, can we just wait till the meeting?
Okay, well, it's all with the.
Okay.
Because I know, I, I think there's some accounts that are just Nathan and some that are, have Brooke on them.
Well, he's in the other room. Should we ask him? Would, would that iron it out for you or you want to wait? He can probably tell you right off the top of his head. If he, if he wants to come over, I, thank you.
Because they're just, the reconciliation, they're just talking about the checking accounts and LGIP, right? And not, not the investment accounts.
Okay.
I fail.
Oh, he can't. Oh, he went to lunch, okay, alright. Okay, so we'll just table it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have, yeah.
So you want to know the accounts?
Well, yeah, because I, I, I just, I'll bank account. I just wonder if, if there's ones where maybe Brooke should review them or if they just, you know.
I don't think she has any balancing, but we, we, let's get the people that, that are actually working with it and then we'll just handle it there. Okay.
Because does Brooke, does Brooke reconcile the payroll account?
She doesn't, so, okay. 6.2, consider adoption of public meeting grievance procedure policy. This came out of the public meetings training law that we had in January and we posted a procedure based on what OGAFC recommends on our website. This is just formally approving. Okay, right, and we were all at that training and we learned that there's now going to be a local grievance policy, another layer of local review on, on these complaints. And this led us out the procedure, which needs to be taken on our website. So have you looked at the procedure?
I see the back page.
Oh, we better fix that.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is just when, like, if a complaint goes to the Ethics Commission and then it comes back to the county, is how we deal with that?
Okay. So we received the grievance from the Ethics Commission.
Directly.
From the complaintant directly. So the local review first and then you either deny and deny it, admit or deny, admit, admit, and then it could rise to level to, to them.
The Ethics Commission.
Yeah, so send our response to the complaint and we copy the state.
Right from the start, right?
Right from the start, yeah. Yeah. Okay, I move to approve the public meeting grievance policy as presented.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the public meeting grievance policy. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion carries. Okay. Hot topic.
I want to change the Elizabeth.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Discuss the Oregon Department orders for wildfire hazard mapping and appeals process. Okay, I'm sure everybody's going to have some thoughts on this. I've been following the Eastern Oregon caucus calls, which are every Tuesday, and that's a legislative review of Oregon commissioners, county courts, and legislators. This has definitely been a, a very hot topic. We've also, Eastern Oregon Counties Association has discussed and reviewed this and taken action regarding what we can do about this. The one thing I want the public to know is that if you received a letter, if you received mail, in our household, we received for, for our properties, every single one of our properties falls in in this high-risk, the deadline to appeal is March 10th. There's one-page appeal form in that packet and it's a very simple form to complete, but the first question on the appeal form is, have you retained an attorney? And we've gotten some input that has scared people. You do not need to retain an attorney. The more people that file the appeal form, the more the more information the state's going to receive. And I'm not going to tell you to do it, I'm just letting you know that, that's one way that people can speak, if that's what people choose to do. Also want to read a press release from the Eastern Oregon Counties Association. I'm just going to summarize. The wildfire hazard map was created with good intentions, but it has caused more harm than good for Eastern Oregon residents. It has increased, it's devalued properties, increased insurance costs, and imposed excessive restrictions. There's, there's been a movement to have the maps repealed. I did also get some feedback from a property owner who was trying to rent a business here in this town and their insurance rates went up $1,500 and they called and asked their insurance company why, which, we were told that these, these maps wouldn't affect insurance rates and they were told by Leland Insurance, that is because of the, the maps that were released. So there's legislative action. And that's where we're at with it today.
Do, do we have these forms on our website?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
And maybe get a paper to do a release or something.
That's a good idea.
Good idea for the paper.
Yeah, have the paper do a release.
Because we know about it.
Yeah.
A lot of people go to bail and go.
Right, and Sherman County did put it, just the date and you, you may appeal, you don't need attorney. They put it on their Facebook page. Just that little bit of information can let people know it is going to make a difference to do it.
Yeah.
Along with the form that they can just download it.
Yeah.
Well, the Eastern Oregon Counties Association, yeah, that was the one, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Because it's confusing. I mean, it's that thick and then that back paper it says, it pretty much kind of, the way it states it, looks like you have to retain an attorney. That look crooked at the beginning.
Well, I'm trying to understand how a brick building worth $1,700 weren't going to be insured because of this.
Right.
So, oh, it's a hot topic in there. Can you imagine some of them ranchers on the, in Southern Oregon? Right, their taxes had to have went quite high.
Right. Okay, so press release, put, put it on our website, the, the appeal form and do our other outreach on, online. Okay? And if anybody, well, that's how they could get ahold of the form if it's on our website if they've lost theirs. So, okay. Alright, is there anything else?
It's just crazy how that thing went out of control.
It did. Commissioner Watkins, do we have anything to add?
I, I have been, I was sat in on the legislative thing that was talking about using dogs in some of the counties in Eastern Oregon. I don't know if that has gotten any traction or explained anywhere, so. I think Todd Nash talked about it the other day. So, right. And they got, and then, I, I've seen it on, my husband saw it on Facebook, I'm not on Facebook, but the wolf in Southern Oregon that's killing all the ranchers count. I think that was Lake County that, talking about it, so.
Yeah. But there's a lot of bills, a lot of bills, yeah, going through.
Had a career meeting last Friday. Lot of stuff coming down the pipe, of course, but with everything that's happening on the national level, BPA, they're pretty worried about BPA losing 200 people of their senior people. You know, just projects getting the infrastructure and I can't remember the gentleman's name from Lake County down there, but he had talked to somebody in Pacific Power about the power. I don't remember his name now, but he was, he was trying to remain calm when he was just talking to us about it, but everybody's having a lot of power outage just because of the main power company's doing these shutdowns. And it sounds like Pacific Power now has an attorney as their CEO that is, his job is to keep them out of lawsuits and this gentleman quoted us that, the quote was, what do I tell my constituents? And the Pacific Power guy's statement was, get a generator. I know Pilot Rockley said they have 40-some power shutdowns in August and, and September. So, I don't know, there's a, you know, trying to development, trying to get development to continue. Nobody knows where that's going. There's just a lot of stuff in the air right now, so.
Right.
Yeah, because how's it gonna affect those Googles and that, that are, that huge power sucks
Right.
on our systems.
And they talked a little bit about Yematilla County is working on trying to permit these small nuclear units and there's some being permitted, I believe, up And there's some being permitted, I believe, up in Washington Hanford. Um, but Tess Miles, the lobbyist, said that the temperament that she presented from the legislators was. They weren't completely against that, it was kinda open, so maybe that's a good thing.
That must've been what they were talking about that was gonna be across the river by Boardman in Washington?
Hanford, that's where, that I was told.
Okay, cause I was just told it was right across the river from, um, Boardman, but.
Yeah, I was told Amazon was trying to permit four of these units at the Hanford site.
Okay.
But that's just information, those, don't quote me for.
Cause how far away is that from?
It's just over the hill. Yeah, just out of Richland. But yeah, so anyway, so maybe there, maybe this is some hopeful. For some of the immediate thing coming down within the next five years, but, uh, yeah, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's. Nobody knows where it's gonna go, so. The other thing I have is there's a NRCor meeting tomorrow. Uh, I'll be in Salem, but Commissioner Watkins can zoom in on the NRCor. Or do you get all the updates, the emails, right?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I cut in on the last one.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, that's all I have.
It ran long, it went into one of my. Had to go early, so.
Okay, it's been busy, we got the legislative session, um. Just keeping up with what's going on, I think, making sure that we have one of us on those Eastern Oregon caucus calls. And the Eastern Oregon Association of Camp, or Eastern Oregon Counties Association calls keeps us abreast. With the legislative session, things can shift quickly, so you gotta have to have your head on a swivel and watch what's going on until, until it's done. So through June, that's the way it's gonna be.
I've been, I've been sitting on those, I was brushing my teeth the last time when the caucus called and they called Gillum County, I was like, I should my.
Oh, okay, sorry. That's okay, um. So, uh, we had our town hall, we've done both of our town halls, I think we have. Received our input and I think, um, they were very different town halls in both communities and they were good. I think it's just good to do outreach and find out what the people think our focus should be.
So was Cory putting those together?
Yeah, she's gonna compile, going to compile the list. And we're gonna put them on the website, do you think? I think that that would probably be a good, be a great idea. Um, and then figure out if we wanna adjust accordingly for next year with a lot of. For us, for everyone. Um, the other thing we did with this information is MCKED, which the hope is eventually we'll join MCKED. We, we, uh, have been working with Jessica Meta, her name's Jessica Meta, correct? And we used our list to provide them the, our priorities. So, um, all the things we're working on in addition to some of the things that we put, um, the childcare expansion, we put broadband. Um, the bus barn, the event center, um, and then the other major things that we heard, um, for. From the town hall on that.
So are we getting any closer with MCKED?
They needed this list first and then we can start the conversation of where in the next, in fact, I think she asked in an email, what's the next step? So, we, we'll reach out and find out what the next step is, but we needed to do this first.
Cause did the, the Washington counties had to okay it, have they already went through that step or?
I, they all backed away. The middle of this, and I don't think anybody backed away because the last conversation I had with Je- uh, Jessica was, they just wanted to wait till. Twenty twenty-five to see the stability within our organization and be able to, if they wanted to, us to join them. So that was one of the things that they wanted to pause. So, um, I think we've done that.
Cause we're, now we're just in no man's land.
But GEO DC stepped away from Gillum County?
We're, no. We stepped away from them and we're in the process of moving to MCKED. When the recall happened, when the recall happened, they went, hmm, we don't want.
You know, they had to give us two.
They had partners, so we're like, eh, we don't wanna deal with that. So, now we have some time under our belt and I think it's time to start, um, to have their list. Um, talk to them about when the next, what the next step would be with them. Um, town halls, we go to county college tomorrow. County college is January, February, they skip March, April, May and June, so a weekend in each of those months.
Is it June too?
Uh-huh.
First time.
Yes. And I have a grandbaby due.
And then they like for you to come back in September, and they like you to come back in November. And so we've been.
Tell you that.
Yeah.
We've been working on the budget before Brooke left and went on vacation, Brooke and Nathan worked on, um. Getting the budget out, the sheets out to everyone, we have a good foundation, um, for that. Um, we're diving into the process, um, excited about it. We're gonna add, try to add narratives to each budget page, which is gonna be a brief description of an overview of the program. And a, and the asks for that year. Um, so that a budget committee member can actually pick up the document and. Get a, get a general overview of what, what the dollars, uh, mean.
Well, I would always write notes on my one sheet and then the next time they give you a new set of pages and so. But your notes were on the whole.
Right. So, yeah, um, we're working on a new strategic investment program agreement with. Um, leaning Juniper two B and, um, I've had it legally reviewed, the draft. It looks like there will be a public hearing and I'm just learning about this process, but I do, I do understand. Yeah, it's taken a lot of study to learn about this part of the job, but we're doing, we're doing fine and, and figuring this out. Um, I started my outreach with the taxing districts on the community service fee, which is an important piece of. The agreement because that shows the districts that are affected in the tax code. Um, what they're going to receive in their community service fee and it's always been done showing a percentage. Of, um, of how we allocate that. Um, so I anticipate. Um, well, I sent the agreement after our legal review to the company and now they're looking at. It's just the finishing touches, just very few changes, um, on the agreement, so we're basically, um, in agreement. You will look at it, the public will have an opportunity to speak. And then we just go from there and then it goes to, if it's approved, it goes to Business Oregon for approval. We have to have an IGA with the taxing districts and that will be North, North Health, North Fire, Port of Arlington. Um, North Cemetery. And I might be missing one.
City?
Not the city, just the saddest one.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah.
So, um. Anyway, there'll have to be an IGA, we'll have to create a resolution and then we'll have an agreement. And that in. It's, it, it's a good agreement. Um, we, we. Shot for seventy-five percent tax replacement and the company agreed to that. So that's a good agreement and I think it's really important with these agreements that we are setting the benchmark and not just shooting in the dark. What are we hoping to gain? They need a tax incentive, yes, but we also need to protect. All of us for the fifteen years that we have, that they have the tax break. Also built into this agreement is. I think over time, we've learned with these strategic investment agreements, they've been done different ways, we've gotten smarter and looked at history and how things have been done. Um. Setting money aside for later discussions about what we wanna do with that money, I think is wise. As opposed to building in specifics into the agreement that you get locked into. Because as we know, over time, things can change, um, and so that's what I'm trying to do. With the local improvement payments, we can sit down and discuss among all of the people who will benefit, what we will do with those dollars.
Public hearing is March nineteenth?
Yes.
For that.
Okay, you, March nineteenth, it'll be the first item on the agenda for a regular reading.
Well, okay.
We do also the lead assessment ordinance.
There'll be two public hearings, okay. Thank you. Um, other than that, just, you know, we just work and get my, get our feet wet. So that's all I have. Anything else? Okay, made it adjourned.